Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a special meeting of the PRCAC which was really intended to have an opportunity for our new county executive to talk to outside here. For us to hear from them and them to hear from us, it's not really set up as a public comment session, but of course is invited to see some people here.
Yeah.
So I think I'd like to turn it over to you.
Okay, that's great. You don't have any form of agenda or anything?
You are your agenda.
That's simple then. No, thank you very much. Thank you for having me on my evening. For us to come Monday with everybody as well as thanks for all of you coming. It really shows that the community is engaged or that people are interested in what goes on in their community. And I think that I am quite a bit familiar with Point Roberts, but from a different perspective. I was the council member and when I got active, the council members get voted by the county, which has changed now. It's by the district and so I have been here, coming here for several times. And now I'm on a different position and I see. Let me back up. I had a bill, a chance to meet with taxpayers committee and borders committee as well as chamber of commerce. And then today we, CAC committee today as well. My simple thought has been we need to do something about Point Roberts to make it more active and vibrant. This place has a lot of opportunity, but challenges as well. You know, then that's what always is when there's a challenge, the opportunity is right behind the challenge. It's the flip side of the challenge is the opportunity. And one of the thing is that how we can make it a little bit more economically vibrant? Because that runs the other things. I have heard several times and which I totally believe in, we don't want to make it a casino town. You know, if you only think of money, that's the easiest way to make it. Is create that kind of character of this town. But that's not what the works and that's not anybody wants. So we need to see what are the other ways that we can do it. On our way, we made an appointment with the mayor of Delta, City of Delta. We stopped by, spent some time with them and talked about Point Roberts because we already get water from them. We have a cooperation with them on EMS, emergency, fire, other type of things. I just wanted to renew, you know, acquaintance with them and invite them to Bellingham and us to them on more regular basis. I thought that's a big population base which can, which impacts the economy of this place and can impact even more in future. Now, how do we do this going forward is, is this is entirely your decision. This is not, I'm not coming as a county executive prescribing, this is what you should do, this is what is good for you, this is bad for you. You are smart enough to know what is good for you. And I want you to just come together. One of the thing is, is when people have different groups, different interests, it's just great. Because you are passionate about something and you want to spend your time and energy into that. But to me, something which is missing somewhere is overall community picture. And you tell us, we are just here to facilitate. You're not here to say, this is what you can do. My vision, I actually tried to articulate when people came to a couple of meetings and you have seen one email also that summarized our meeting. I just want to say that you guys, when you are cohesive, you work together, you get the results. There was an issue at Lake Sanish and went on for six, seven months, seven months or something. And you could see that the community was together, they moved the council, right? And that's how I see it, that the elements, the feelings from everybody is the same. Somehow it's not coherent. At least that's the impression I got. Now, I could be wrong if there's something I'm missing or other people are missing, please educate us, educate me, okay? The vision I think is, is that how we can stimulate this economy a little bit better? You know, maybe this 2072. You guys worked very hard and I did not know more of it and I learned the last two PD more about it, that the community really wanted some changes in 2072 to improve it. And you guys worked very hard and which I have no idea that how hard it was for you guys to come to some kind of consensus. Now, when I looked at it totally with fresh eyes, I think you haven't gone far enough. You want to make a change in your 2072, you should be more bold about it. That, you know, when there is no consensus, you try to go to a lower level so that everybody can agree. I, my vision is you should be more bold about it. This is your opportunity to change it. It's not that you can't change it again, but you are putting all these efforts into that. Why don't you change it in a little more impactful manner, which could impact your future? Because if you're going to council and council wants to approve all this and you aren't coming administration to recommend to the council and work with the community, because ultimately council is one that they're going to approve that changes. Our role is to give the opinion from the administration and department side, what is good in it, what is not good, right? I mean, this is totally transferred and processed. But, but I articulated in a couple of meetings I had with voters and the taxpayers was there are more changes you can do. About your zoning, about your property development, about locating all businesses, cottage industry. I think one of the things I heard is the rule is very strict of that if you're living upstairs and you have business downstairs or in the same premise, it's very restricting, right? Maybe that should be changed too. Because, so I just, these are my, that is only my thing is what is best for you, best for this community? And, and if it takes a little more to change and more to converse with that, because you have to plead in front of the council why you want the change. But I don't want you to limit it, not ask for the change. Ask, go for, for the sky, wherever you want, your dream is about Point Roberts. Put it in front of the council. And, and say that why you need those things, why you decided about those things? And then see what the pushback is. You will be totally surprised because you may say, hey, this is what you want, that's what you get, right? So with that, I think that we can do some interactive session, I don't mind. Yeah, I know this is a meeting, but I'm totally open because we're going to do something in the evening as well. But if somebody has just an idea about 2072 or what else you want in your community, I would like to hear that.
Well, thank you. I guess we, yeah, open it up to some discussion. I would say that the last conference you lead into fits very well about the voters and the taxpayers have been proposing in specifically the idea of doing more in the way of zoning changes or land use and zoning changes to start, to start a place that we talked about starting out about a year ago, which was to try to have a vision for the community first and then go from there.
Then actually make the changes which fit your vision.
Right.
That, that's what I saw. I didn't want to diminish what work you have done, right? Because I got from the PDS, I said, send me on the board what, what changes the community wanted or proposed changes, right? Yeah, I saw that. It's, it's, it's great, but you are just tinkering around the hedges. Yes, please.
You know, I don't think anybody in the community really disagrees that, that the logical progression can start with sort of the big picture, working down to the specific and we've sort of articulated that and others have as well as sort of vision, starting with vision and then going back to the sub area plan as way of a, and probably to do a sub area plan that involves an economic development plan that, that creates a area plan and then there may be zoning.
How to do that?
And, and then, you know, it's only, only at the bottom, at the bottom of the logical progression that you get to code change in 2072. But just as a bit of history or explanation for why we got cut up and a year fourth of tinkering at the edges is that there was an enforcement on both road, on some of the restrictions. And, and for some of the people involved and maybe for the community as a whole, you know, because they're related to the local septic provider and so forth. It seemed to be a crisis that needed to be addressed and PDS sort of relented on the timeline for enforcing that on the condition that PrAC demonstrated a seriousness of purpose to revise those scope road provisions. So that's how we sort of ended up working at the bottom instead of at the top. And it's sort of unfortunate, but there is a sort of a reason for that.
Now, do you think that you can give them the window of time?
Yeah, I think you want to be, you know, at this time to have a step back a little bit and rise up to that next level of vision and, and work with PBS staff as it relates to, to 2072 and if that's to start looking at the community plan and the vision hearing process. And that's a good spot to start. I don't know the specifics on the enforcement, if we need to follow up on that.
If you can follow up.
We can. You guys probably know that.
They gave a one year, essentially a one year moratorium last February, which is what gave up the deadline this February to try to have something new in place, but I think there was a, there was an indication that they might be willing to extend it. But we haven't asked for that and at this point if we were going to try to extend, ask them to reword the properties right now. It was going to ask them to extend it based on what's going on in the community. We would probably even have a, I would say possibly a two, I mean, it would seem a little bit greedy, but a two-year extensions in order to have an economic development study, vision, like vision development and then go a sub area plan down to, down to here.
Or right, or, or just recognize that, you know, where you guys got as it relates to the last year of 2072 work satisfies what the request was for that enforcement action.
Yeah, and I think it does.
And then Mark Presonius, the director, would probably recommend, yes, it does.
Yep.
So that gets that behind the community.
Yep.
And we don't have to worry about that baggage and then we move forward into the next access.
Yeah.
Associated with it. That would, that would be my recommendation.
That makes more sense than.
Yeah, we will create a pathway.
Holding back on the recommendations.
Yeah.
Would PBS then supply us with a template to work from and work with us to develop this?
Yeah.
So that we're doing, so that we're not tinkering around edges as opposed to getting right to the, to the meat?
No, I think that what we need to do is, is first develop a vision, economic plan, and then we can tinker on that and we can help you with that when you come to 2072. But if you don't know, then you are kept changing something which is written 20 years ago. Then you're trying to change that. I'm saying it just like ignore that completely. Suppose you are 20 years ago, you're writing something today, what would you like to see? Start from there, right? But this is what our vision is, because what you are doing today, it's going to have impact for that community lives. And you are doing something for your kids and grandkids. And, and, and I tell them, there are very many people like me, we've got very little time. But it's for the next generation. And why don't we think about them and create 2072 that if somebody looks at 2040 and says, what a smart thing they did? That's what you should think, that somebody is reading that year document in year 2040 and say, what a smart thing they did. Not what is happening in your grade right now and you want to solve that. And yes, it is an urgency. You guys did a wonderful job. But the other thing is there's a change of administrations, a new opportunity. It's a new decade, new county executive system and, and, and maybe my take on things may be different than the previous administration. And you guys have worked through even previous administration. Pete Crimmon was there, right? So all I'm saying is, is this is an opportunity for all of you to avail and see that we are willing to work with you.
Along those lines, there are a possibility of funding to support some of these steps. We, we talked at this group about possibly engaging a land use or sustainability planner to help us with that, put a part with an aspect of that vision development. But there was a cost associated with that, economic development plan, of course, generally have a cost associated with it as well.
That, that is fine. That's a fair request. We'll look at it. I don't, I'm not very familiar with where the money is hiding. I don't know all the nooks and pennies.
Is there something that could follow through the UDI?
We look at it up. You don't need to worry about that. What we need to worry about is where we find that money, what it is. But you guys have to give us a coherent proposal. I wish you're trying to do and how you want to accomplish, just saying, well, if we have $20,000 or $10,000, we'll do this. That's not how it's going to work. You have to actually come up with a plan, take month, two months, whatever, write us, think this is what we want to do and this is why we need to, this is going to cost us and this is our deadline and we must submit it for, because ultimately I need to go to the council. Right? I, I do have authority to do a lot of different stuff, but I will not, wherever I can, I want to go to the council first before I use my privacy. That's my way of operating, right? Even if I have the authority to do that, I still want to take, work with the council. So if there's a, because council needs to see and we need to see, yes, they're together, they have it, they're thinking together and they want to do this. So let's find money for that, right?
Yeah, one way to start that process is instead of looking at 2072, just look at the community plan.
Yeah.
And, and, and think about that as the template for this document, vision document moving forward. And which sections of the community plan do you guys want to update? And then recognize what level of effort that would be and what support would be needed. We would then take that and go back to PBS and say, you know, Cliff, Nick, whoever it is, is this something that we could go and help them facilitate, walk through? And, and hopefully it is. And then we would ask them, is there additional support that would be needed? And if there is, that's when we look to outside help to, to help kind of accomplish that process. But I, I think most importantly, it's, it's working with the community yourselves on establishing a process that that would actually get a valuable outcome and community dialogue to do that update. That, that's what's first needed, I think, at this point. And you guys can use that as one of your, your, your central poles to kind of move together on that.
So what's PBS?
Oh, Planning Development Services, sorry, yep. And so they have been assigned and they will be working on 2072 update, on the zoning update. If that takes a little bit of a, of a higher level and look at the community plan, that's who would be helped facilitating that conversation. It's just, is there a level of effort above what staff could just do? And I don't know if there is or not. And that's what the proposal would kind of help us spare it out.
Okay?
Yeah, with PrAC, your board only having four members at the moment, as nobody's been appointed until the fifth seat. As you can see, it struggles at times to have a forum. Is anything going to be done about filling that vacancy soon? Because with this process, we need more minds instead of less on the board and hopefully that creates further outreach to the community, having, you know, more people to interact.
I know. I need to learn a little more. It's in my hands. I've seen the two applications. I didn't want to hastily just appoint somebody, right?
Right.
And, and this is something else we should talk about, maybe in the townhouse meeting tonight, that what we should do, I did allude in a couple of meetings I had that maybe we need to look at that itself. Is, is a, to me, it seems like it's dysfunctional because the structure we have, maybe it was great thing. Maybe it was this thing when Pete Crimmon saw that there are three different entities and they are doing their stuff. Let's make another fourth entity on top of them where these guys feed into that and that would be responsible for the community work, right? But it didn't quite, it's not there at this point of time, right? What it's supposed to do, maybe we should just revise the whole thing. That's why I just wanted to take a little time. It's not that I, you know, appointing somebody, somebody is very easy, but undoing that is difficult. I think, let's take a little break. You know, you guys, if you're four people, you can limp along another six months. No, I know, I, I understand, but this is not something that you not getting the input. You are all here to give the input. It's not that you're missing the community input, of course, your, your mechanism or decision making is, is a little bit tenuous.
It is. It's a potential tie, two, two ties.
Yeah, if, if you guys want to continue and you want me to make a temporary appointment, I would be amenable to that.
I would, I would.
And this is all has to come from you guys, not me. But if you say that, okay, for this working and the task we are talking about to accomplish, you need a temporary person. We can do it one year appointment. But then everybody need to understand and I need to make council understand or maybe I can take on my appointment. I can say, we can do it for one year only. Yes, please.
Yeah, I just, I understand and you kind of, it's a sense. But I just want to say that I don't think the two are mutually exclusive. I mean, if we fill the, and the appointments are only two years, so one year, two years really makes little difference the way, at the speed that they really go realistically.
Okay.
But they're not mutually exclusive because if we were to come to the conclusion that PrAC is totally dysfunctional and should really be eliminated and replaced with something better, then the sitting members would just cease to be members. So, so, and I just want to mention that the last two vacancies for the outlarge slots, the community made an attempt. Things can always be improved, but they're both to fill Steve's position and to fill the current vacancy. There was an attempt by PrAC, led by PrAC itself, to fill that those vacancies democratically rather than just kind of mysteriously or arbitrarily. So I think that is part of what might make PrAC more legitimate and more able to, to speak for the community because, well, it just seems like that's, that's the way things work in our society in the elective representative. And then if you don't like them, you like somebody else next time.
I, I just have a question. I'm not real up on American business civics and everything, but as we go forward, as you can see, Point Roberts wants to be, have more self-determination as to what happens here. We want to be more controlled, we want to be more proactive, more involved in what happens here, making those decisions. What is the structure that you see that we can start to put in place now for the end result being 10 years from now we're in a corporate city? Like how do we, how do we structure ourselves from a civic's point of view, not just boots here as a product?
I, I, I want this question back to you or the community. Why don't you guys envision that what you'd like your administration governance should be? Than us coming out of the plan. Now, becoming a city, I, I, I think that a lot of people will be happy if you become, become a city, but they can't.
Are you talking the counties though?
Yes, council members. Actually, citizens of, or people of Point Roberts would be very happy. And all the other people who complain, they will understand what it takes to run a city. It's very easy to say that, oh, why don't you do this, why don't you do that, why don't you do that? Maybe you sit on this side of the table, it's a totally different experience. So, but you, you cannot become a city unless you have 2,500.
15, 15.
1,500 voters, right? Yeah, so.
15, 15 residents.
Just residents?
Yeah, people by the evidence, census, a whole ton of residents.
Okay, so we will know, you will know in few months, right? Your census is, is starting. But that, that is something that you can think about. It is not the city, I mean, you know. But the thing is for your government's thing and, and people have talked about election. Let me just clarify that. It's unincorporated area. We cannot have formal elections. But it doesn't mean that you can find, devise your own way. And in that election process, you can bring up on the talk the people who need to be appointed. And then those are the people whose name goes to the council or to the county executive and we can appoint to those people.
Well, that is in fact what we have now. That's the process I went through and that we just did now with Craig Grossman and Pamela Shepard. So we have actually, it's two weeks, I mean, it was an email, it was an email voting process, but it was an attempt to implement a local electoral process to fill the seats. So that, that is what is, the two names are in front of me. And I was, I was for a second what Mark was saying, that these things really aren't mutually exclusive, that we could get our new member, even if the whole board is, is, we are like six months from now or a year from now and, and have a new membership coming from a different source altogether. And there is of course a proposal from both the voters and the taxpayers, I believe, or, I mean, I shouldn't speak about that. There's, there is a, a, some input that we, that we know.
I actually marked all the emails from everybody.
The selection process, the selection process overall should be changed rather than have organizational members. That if you have five, possibly have five black mark members or have a majority of black mark members and still keep the three organizational members, things like that.
So where is, where is the, what's the status of that, obviously?
Well, I, as far as I know, I'm going to say clearly that the, the PRCAC itself has not had a discussion about that. I don't know if the chamber has, but the two other organizations have both been in favor of some changes.
I think we're a little gray and we both had conversations that said that we would like the PRCAC to be all at large. We felt that as the voters association and as the taxpayers association, we should not automatically have a seat at the board. There's multiple different associations in Point Roberts. It's not fair for just a couple of particular groups to actually get a vote and get a seat at the table to maybe have their agendas fulfilled further than anyone else's. That it should be that all the members who are at large, you get elected. If you happen to be on the chamber or the voters or the taxpayers, so be it. You were elected by the community to be a representative. And it also holds them accountable because if you are sitting for a two-year term, if you don't do your job, you don't get voted in next time. Whereas in the structure we have right now, if your committee, if you're not doing your job right now, your committee can keep putting you in at seat.
Because maybe it is that that conversation, picture come to the PRCAC, you guys could deliberate around that. And that kind of then would be a vessel or the next conversation before the appointment happens or within the six months that there's a temporary appointment so that there can be a decision about that.
Yeah, I would still, I would still vote for that. I would still, I didn't see the temporary, I think it's not, it's not a whole, like it could always be changed.
There was an original ordinance that created the PRCAC and they were supposed to create bylaws, but those bylaws have never been created to date. Now, if the bylaws were created now to restructure, would the ordinance have to be rewritten to reflect the, its following, the, the created bylaws by the community of Point Roberts?
Yes, that's exactly one of the point I had was that we can fill this vacancy right now for whatever basis we come up with. Yes, that's exactly one of the point I had was that we can fill this vacancy right now, for whatever basis we come up with. The idea would be that their first charge should be only to pay, to envision the vision of this community, the community plan, community area plan, sub-area plan, and then twenty-seventy-two, that should be the only charge given to them. To end right the bylaws, end the election process and everything. The, the other challenge I put in to, to one of the committee was that, uh, the members, the committees are committees, but how many members are behind them? And how many members are, actually, I said, if somebody in Point Roberts comes up with five hundred members who pay ten dollars a year, I think that committee should take over everything. You know, that's only shows that community is behind that, right? And, and I think every community has a very limited number of members behind them. But they, of course, say that I represent what is Point Roberts. And that is an issue with me.
That might be, in terms of, in terms of why, it might be, might be.
That's what I think.
How do other, how do incorporated, um, communities in North America, or the United States, deal with their governments?
They don't let stop for what's coming, right? Well, that part, we have a lot of big community. We have Candle.
And how do they govern themselves?
Yeah. They, they just have one committee, and, and they work through that. But Birch Bay, Birch Bay, uh, area, eighty-five hundred residents, if they vote tomorrow, they will be the fourth largest city. In Waukegan County.
And they, they don't have a community committee.
They don't have.
They, they function through the chamber, they function with the council members.
Yeah.
Because the council members are the ones that represent them. Uh, but there isn't a specific committee like there is in Point Roberts.
I think the, the, the point here is, who's looking after the interest of the community? Community really doesn't need committees. They need their work done, their needs fulfilled. If, if those things are happening, nobody will actually complain about that, that who is the committee, who is only member, who's not a member. That only comes when there are, when there are different group conflicts. I want dominate that, I wanna dominate that, I wanna have two members on there, my votes are more than them. That's what my basic premise is, who is looking after the community issues? If you solve that, Birch Bay eighty-five hundred people, it's right here.
And so who goes after their community?
They, they just don't have a committee, they come up with the issues, they have a library committee, they have, they go talk to their council member. Or they come and talk to me, or the county executive, and they present, and if something doesn't help, so far, they're pretty happy. It means that their voice has been heard.
But there, there's a, there's a premise behind that, that we can, that if we form a, if we found a committee that has five hundred members each paying ten dollars a, a year, I think we'll probably end up with two five hundred member committees that are each paying ten dollars, and you're going to walk on the same page.
That really reflects who you are. Sorry, I mean, that, that's the point here, really. That are you on the same page and agreeing with visions? No, no, sorry, let me say one more thing. Uh, and I shared this with one of the committee. You cannot legislate honestly. You cannot legislate integrity. You cannot legislate responsibility. You can make this big document bylaws, and people will still find a way to disagree with that. Right? So, it, it comes from here, from inside here.
You can't legislate vision either.
Can't legislate vision, yeah. So, so you, everybody has to look back inside yourself and see what we really want. And, and another thing is compromise. Compromise does not mean you have to agree on everything. It means that you come up with a solution, people say, I can live with that. I think, I think this is not what I wanted, but I can live with it. Until you get to that point, nothing will happen.
Can you give me a second?
Well, I just wanted to point out that the community is capable of having agreement about some things enough of the community. We raised eight hundred thousand dollars for a new library. And we didn't have eight hundred thousand members, we had over, well over a thousand members. And, um, people said, I don't care about the library along the way, they didn't become donors. But if you can't, if you can't have something that attracts a larger number of people in the first place, I agree with you there. Uh, but I would, I'll say that when I was being the fundraiser for that, the fundraiser, the county said, hi, nice to see you, you can keep working. But maybe you should have come to us and said, well, when you finish with the library fundraising, would you like to become the advisory committee? We have actually showed we have done something. And in Birch Bay, if they manage to get the ten million or eight million members they need, I would suggest you employ them immediately. Uh, they have demonstrated that they can do stuff. But when, many years ago, before the advisory committee was formed, there was here an attempt to create a local advisory committee. And the first six or seven meetings we had, we argued about who was entitled to be a representative on that group.
For the library?
No, so, no, it was, yeah, the committee for the whole, it was, it was what Prac came, but we were trying to do it here. And it lasted for about, maybe seven or eight months before we realized that, uh, because it was what Prac ended up with, basically. But that there, there was no way to say who had a right to be on that committee. And as long as you're doing that, I just think you're, I mean, as long as that is the framework that you're working with, I think you're dead in the water. That's the advice of the former head of the principal.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, I think those are great words, and I think they're great words for everybody to listen to. I, I think they're kind of directed this all on, and I understand why, but they should really be directed to all of you.
Yeah.
Well, I could thank plenty of the people in this room, I didn't give seven hundred thousand.
I, I think the life president of the library probably checks the five, the box of five hundred people and, and. Because they had a vision and they were moving forward towards something.
Yeah, that would, that would be just ad hoc, ad hoc vision, as they have, as a vision for something.
But that vision was, we knew we needed the new library, but that was all we knew. What we lacked was any kind of expertise about that, not about fundraising, but about libraries. And I find, and I've worked on a lot of committees in the twenty-five years or so I've been in local community, is that that's what's lacking, but it was here. Somebody with some expertise. Uh, we all got ideas, I mean, if you'd like to tell me how to reform Gulf Road, I'd be happy to tell you how to do it. But I don't know anything about how to reform, you know, you haven't listened to me.
You said you didn't know anything about libraries either.
Oh, I knew a lot about libraries, but I didn't know the technical stuff about building a library.
But you got it accomplished.
But that was because we had what the county library work with. They were convinced that this, if we could do, raise the money, they could do that part of it. And I'd never had for a minute to think that they weren't, they didn't know what they were doing.
Yeah.
And I find so often here with things, it's like, you get funny things done, but, but then they don't work afterwards, because nobody knew enough to ask the right question.
Yeah, that's true. See, there's another way to look at it, is, is that, uh, when you have nothing to do, you invent things to do.
I just invented getting old, is what I'm saying. But thank you for coming in, and thank you for, for trying to make the contacts with us, like, we're a hard bunch, we're a frugal bunch.
I said, and I'm saying, and I'll say it tonight as well, that I really care about Point Roberts, I see the opportunity here. And I think that I would like to spend more time than, you know, that has been spent on Point Roberts. It's not only me coming here ten times, that's not important, it's that paying attention to Point Roberts. And, and I really wanna do that.
I wonder if you could clarify, I don't understand when you say Birch Bay does not have organized voice, um, for presenting of their vision. Like, who is they, when they come to you with a vision, I'm like, who are they?
They have, like, they did create a call, something called Baby Warm, that is their, um, water sewer district, right?
Well, yeah, Water Resource Management.
A Water Resource Management District, they text themselves like Parks District does. And, and those people actually take on stuff like this, but maybe they are more closer than you guys are. You know, physically very far, something gets happening here, doesn't reach Bellingham. And they are more plugged into Bellingham, means it comes. Yes, no, that's true, hey, that's how the floor works. Right? So maybe that is why they never had this need for having a committee, because they are able to bring their concerns directly into the council chambers. And here they answer some things.
So say, so say I live in Birch Bay and I want some land released for, uh, tur, some tourist development. I go to the water people and say, this is what I would like to see, do you guys like that idea? Would you take it to council? Is that, is that how you do it?
You take it to the council.
So, so Birch Bay does, have, they did about the same time as Point Roberts.
You take it to council, not, not those other organizations.
No.
As, as a resident, you just.
Yeah.
Yeah, just good.
Go to the council, and then if people write, you know, I'll tell you what to do, we, yes. Now, this is a good example. So, two years ago, we had a lot of requests from people on the Birch Bay, uh, that Marine Drive of.
Birch Bay Drive.
Birch Bay Drive. They wanted us to allow golf carts on that road. And people are smiling, yes. So they wanted to make it a, 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 a demissible that people can drive the golf carts on this. And we had ladders from both sides, and we had, uh, representation, citizens like yourself. There were ten people from this side, ten people from this side, they come over, and, uh, and it went on for six months, even more. And, uh, and after that, council decided, and I was on the council, that we can allow golf carts. And we still got, you know, there's always some opposition to anything you do. And we had some irate ladders and things, and, you know, after a while, now we start getting ladders, the best thing happened to them. But it doesn't mean that everybody agrees with that. It's, there's still people who feel that it was the wrong decision, right? But majority of people are happy with that, and that was done actually directly, individual people either writing or coming to the council. There was no committee, no, they formed their own ad hoc committee, golf cart committee.
Yeah.
And that's what they did, and after that happened, it all went away.
Well, I think Point Roberts would actually do that just fine, to not, to not have a CAC, to just have ad hoc.
Ad hoc committee, then you have an issue or a committee, and then do this, and, and go back to normal.
I think that's a good idea.
There's no need for that.
I was gonna say, Mark and I are all nodding.
Don't be, you know, the community is then focused on that issue, because if you look at it, this community, you don't have tons of issues. Like, a, a city would have, every week, every other week, there are more issues. You have two or three major issues, right? And if you can make that issue as your committee or your representation, deal with it, get the decision done, and then you wait for the next one. That, you don't have any things for to do.
So we could, we could have.
Maybe you have a committee, then they wanna do something.
We could have a lighthouse cart committee, we could.
I was gonna say, wait, on the list for both.
Yeah.
It is. I'm talking revolution, when Pete Crumman put this committee together, I was involved, I was one of the at-large positions. But the whole purpose was because individuals, a handful of individuals, would come down, and it, it became intolerable.
Yeah.
Because these were individuals, not coming as a group or committee or anything. And I think that's when they said, hey, you guys gotta get your act together, there's no need to have this happen. So, now we're back, back to.
Hey, there could be a certain cynicism, just about cynicism, and, and I can release you, that thing, it's longer than I, what I'm about to say is, sort of, things that I heard, uh, that, from me before I came, I've been here fifteen years, so not that one. But, you know, there, it's, I've heard that, that consistently in all the past planning exercises in committees and so forth, there, there was widespread agreement on certain things that the people wanted around here, they wanted trails. They, they wanted a lighthouse, they wanted a pier at the end of Gulf Road. Um, what else, there were, there were certain things that, there was consensus, there was a vision, but there was, it never, we never got it, so.
Yeah, that was the original, we did a questionnaire with Prac, the primary one, through, is just what you said, the trails were number one by far, and the lighthouse and the pier.
But we don't have the governance, the structure to be able to accomplish.
Well, because when we did the lighthouse, council voted yes, and it got squashed by the, by the executive at the time. Without saying, you know, let's try and mediate something and figure something out. Um, we tried to pier at the end of Gulf Road, and it was just, basically, every time it was answered, it was no, 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 no. Um, that was partly, I suppose, great for engineers and engineers, but just finding different things like lighthouse cart, you know, dog, and just, you know, things.
Is it time for you?
The busiest, fastest.
Symbolic of how America's around here. He's rubbing the machine.
Can I, yeah, uh, so kind of, can you, what we were talking about earlier, say, I'm really interested in getting high-speed internet throughout Point Roberts, and I think that would be sort of economic basis. We started out talking about economic development and boosting the economy here, and I see that as a necessary infrastructural piece that, that is kind of missing here. And so if I wanted to, say, I could put together a committee to spearhead that, get hundred, hundred members there, let's say, everybody's on this committee, people who are interested. And then we could go to council with a plan, with specific requests for, and working, say, with, with, for example. Would be said, okay, in order to make this happen, we need so much money. You know, can we get public money that we could go for to the council and ask? And saying, here's what you would invest, and here would be the return on that investment. So, sort of a.
I think that you're right, you can go to the council, and it doesn't even have to be a registered body or a tested group. You can just say that these are the hundred people who have signed and they want it, and or more people want it. And, uh, if people, if it is transparent, if, if there's no objection, see, that's how the council looks at it. If the five ladders come, or people come and speak, and then, next there comes ten different other people, or ten ladders, that this is not what you want. That's all you gave it, right?
Yeah.
That, is it something the community really wants or not?
Well, and that doesn't usually happen in Birch Bay. On Birch Bay, there is no committee.
Yeah.
There's usually people coming forward that say, yes, we wanna do this, and do the day. And that usually, in a generality, happens in Point Roberts. So when there is no format or no committee that move forward, somebody will voice support for it, and then right after, there'll be opposition. So back in Executive Premon's Day, when the committee was set, that happened too often, and so there was no unified voice. And so somebody thought, well, let's try to formalize that unified voice, that's where we've gotten the committee. Now it's time just to rethink what the community thinks the best way to accomplish that unified voice is.
Okay.
And Lake Sandhurst was the other.
Yeah.
So Lake Sandhurst, what you said earlier, weight, um, size and distance on the lake, there was no unified voice. Council didn't quite know how to accomplish it, and there became a unified voice, and it was passed, and, and, and there's some in the audience that, that watched that whole process. And it didn't get consensus from the council until there was a unified voice associated with it.
That's very useful.
One thing I wanna say that, you still have your freedoms, you still have, you know, US citizens, you have all those rights. How you use it is your prerogative, not your, or government also, you make it that government.
Yep.
It's your prerogative how you. It's your prerogative how you use your own rights. How good we use them, how not so good we use them, both ways.
Well, this process you're talking about really is a grassroots, is the definition of it. And I, to me, that's the best way to do this. Can I ask a question? Like, the community does have, the community does have things that it wants. And there are things happening here that are clearly not pleasant for anyone. But again, we have no power to enforce following the laws and rules that we want to enact here. What, you can say that, you can decide as a community what you want, but if the community doesn't have any power to enforce it to be that way, what business has that? What power do we have to say, clean up TJ's that's overgrown and is taking up valuable commercial real estate? But there could be another that's comparable, that was very popular when it was open. And now it's just sitting there, being run down, and that's the grass. So what can we do? How can we do that?
I don't know more about that.
I have the next question. I'll walk you around.
TJ, I can actually answer part of that question for you. The building is too close to the road, according to 2072, because 2072 says on Tai that there is a 50-foot setback. So there's been no business there for over 12 months, which means it no longer has, it's not conforming use anymore. So no one's going to buy that piece of property, because you can't, even if you could renovate the building, it's, you know, it's a tear down. You can't put a building where that building is now, because it doesn't need current code. They'd have to figure out how to set it back 50 feet, create the bumpers and stuff because of 2072. So it's kind of, that's the catch-22 that we have right now with 2072, but that is one of the suggestions we did, I think, look forward, did it was changing that portion of Tai to no longer have a 50-foot setback in that commercial area.
You say doesn't need code, you mean set 2072?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a variance process there?
Not in that particular one.
They have written a proposal to change.
To change that. So currently it can.
That one is in the books right now.
As soon as they figure the change.
The surface of that setback was really for the voted areas.
Yeah, it was only supposed to go to Benson, but for some reason, when it got written, it ended up being the whole darn thing. So that's part of those changes. So something could now happen.
You guys are more close to these situations and know, understand them better than us sitting in Bellingham.
Maybe I already smoked a little bit on Jalen.
I already smoked.
People that have bought it were, were arrested for smoking in the.
I have endangered species.
Through Point Roberts, so. So earlier on, earlier on, when you were talking about, you were talking about the zoning changes and the small kids that we were nibbling on the edges. And you clearly had a vision for us to create a vision and do possibly larger-scale changes and whatever could ever scale, and we think would be appropriate to implement the vision that we come up with. Just to go backwards to the smaller part that we're trying to nibble on, that the PRCAC developed over the last year, was your preference or assessment of the shelf that? Or do we go ahead and put that forward, that we do that knowing that we're going to try to come forward with a more comprehensive approach a year or two down the road, once we have the background to do it?
I really don't have an opinion then not to do it, let me put it. I'm not a least.
Okay.
I just want to make it very clear.
I was just going to say, after sitting and just listening for 45 minutes, it's almost put those forward, get them accomplished.
Yeah.
It accomplishes this TJ situation that I just became aware of. And then it releases the baggage that sounds like there was a little bit with it.
Yeah.
And then the executive can decide about appointing somebody, and then we just move forward.
Move forward.
We just move forward. But I would say move forward to 2072.
Yeah.
And have council consider it, and then kind of start afresh.
Yeah.
Start in the beginning where we would have liked to have in the first place.
Yeah, and to the point. Because there is no limit on how many times you want to change. You can change it now, and then next year we change it again.
Because it sounded like there was some concern that you could only change it once every 10 years or something like that. There was just a little, that's, if the community is interested, they can always move forward.
Yes, please.
So going along with that same thinking of comprehensive and changing things, we all know the garbage issue was an issue. We have a lot of people here on both sides of it. And it's a good time to talk about that. Could we get a comprehensive idea or change it so that includes self-holders and part-timers? The community that has 75% part-timers, they need to be part of the garbage solution. We're all paying $200, it's kind of, I'm there to a large part of candy. And those proceeds are not going to their needs as well. And so I asked Mr. Gladley, since he is here as well, could we include the self-holders into the credit system at the transfer station, since you have that contract too? You could easily invoice for those at the transfer station, I think, through the contract. And then we would have a comprehensive garbage system, and we're all paying into the system. And it could work in a comprehensive way as well.
You said the issue, the issue is that people that don't, you said there are issues. There's an issue, and the issue is that there are people that don't live here full-time, but they don't do that. Is that the issue?
No, that's not the issue.
What are the issues?
A comprehensive system that works for both full-time people and part-time people, Canadians and Americans. I mean, I was here a full-time for a long time. I've always self-hold. I'm having to pay double now when I go to the transfer station. What, when I pay, it's not helping my neighbors. 100% of them, each, do not like the ordinance at all. We, 90% of the South don't use it. So in my community, there's a lot of people, when I pay, I'm not helping my neighborhood at all. So there's a lot of people, it's not just part-timers, it's all timers as well. And so when we came to you, we did have a committee through PrAC. We did speak up at county, and we did try to lower the mandates. So we need your help to have a comprehensive solution. And we think we can do that, and I've asked Mr. Gladley many times, to include those other people in the system and have received help. So we need your help. We've had committees, we've gone to council to get a system, to think of the community as a whole. So that there's solutions, and there's lots of answers. It's not hard, really. And we couldn't have, like, we wanted a district. Okay, we're not going to have a district. We have a committee. I sat in that room, full of community members, 90% voted no on that ordinance, and yet it's still got passed.
That's not true. That's not.
Let's hopefully not have the back and forth in the end, because that just destroys.
It does, and I want to say that if it wasn't the situation that you're saying, that everybody, I'm just putting it back to this whole community, and I, same way. You guys come with a unified voice. Like, we have 1,500 residents in Point Roberts, fairly small place. And now we are saying, "My neighborhood, and this neighborhood, this neighborhood", so who's going to think about whole Point Roberts?
That's what I want. I want to think about whole.
This is your guys' charge, to go to the other community, go to other people, come up with some consensus, like Lake Sandwich did. The community came in, and this is what we want. I think we have gotten a lot of mixed messages over a year and a half. Everybody's passionate. It's not, there is no lack of passion, but there's a lack of consensus. So I think it's a very divisive issue in your own community, right? And you guys first clean up within yourself, and then come to the council. Now, I mean, I'm not on the council right now, but if I was on the council, I would say the same thing again. Yes?
I think this topic coming up underlines a concern of mine, which is myself being misrepresented. And I don't want to be misrepresented.
I totally understand that. Let's not talk about garbage, please, my request.
No, my comment is that this is why PrAC doesn't work, because when there was dissent, or people did question the ordinance and didn't want it to go through and spoke against it, PrAC said, "No, we're not going back to council, we're not doing anything about it, go away, we're not talking to you." So then, that's where we have a problem, is in Point Roberts. What do we do when we have factions that both have rights and are passionate about the situation? How do we have a governing body that disseminates that information and makes the final decision?
That was their final decision, but you, not you, but some people didn't agree with that. That's where the whole issue comes. When you say, "If we are two talking", he says, "Do it my way", right? No, I'm just a second. I'm just giving you an example. And everybody says, "Let things happen my way." And where does the other person go? He has, or she has their way as well. If, as per your description, you came to PrAC, it was after the ordinance was passed, and PrAC decided, "We don't want to open it up again", that was their decision. But if people don't write that decision, there is no solutions to that. I would really not get bogged down into this, that the bigger issue I have come here for. And not that I'm saying that this is not important, but this is, this will just take away from what we have come here together to talk about.
I just bring it up if it speaks to the.
I know, and you have a.
To the, to the government of Point Roberts.
Yes.
How do we get past those types of things happen?
Something you guys have to do, you're soul-searching, and come up with a way that you guys can solve your own problem. Do you, like, kicking the problem up another upstairs is not the solution, because there is another upstairs. Because the thing is, if you can't solve it at your own level, if yours is a community, and that, that demands consensus, some level of consensus, some level of given take. If that can happen at your level, I don't think it can happen at any other level, or it will not be happy, a decision to all the people concerned. That's my take. Yes?
Could you, could you help us kind of vote on it? So that, because we should have been able to vote on that.
I do not, you do not need my help. Why should I be able to help you? You should be able to do that. Commence the people to vote, not me. Who am I?
That's where expertise would help.
Expertise will come, yes, you guys.
We need all the expertise to get the answer, to propose an answer.
The proposal to create a vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, if you said to me, "All right, the county, all right, Julie, you and the friends at the library, please create a new trash solution for us."
Yeah.
I don't have the, I can devise one, just think what would please me, but that obviously isn't. I mean, I don't have such anything costs, I don't know how the county's involvement is. That kind of expertise is what we lack here on so many issues.
Wasn't that the, wasn't that the process that?
And you know what they do talk to, they know how to do that.
Unfortunately, not. That is not the process that it was followed. We were led by Jeff Edges in the Health Department, and not all of us were followed. And when people asked for, to be considered as treated the same as the rest of Lockton County, we weren't. PrAC didn't listen to us when the provider is holding a seat on the advisory.
And nor did your representative government, which is the council. And they made a vote, and they enacted the garbage ordinance, and now it's in place.
Yeah.
So, you know, the representative government looked at the seven council members, looked at the community as a whole, looked at the recommendation that it got from the PRCAC, looked at staff's expertise on the issue, and made a decision. That's how government works. And if there is some specific issues, I think what we're trying to say here is it's better to work through those specific issues in your local community. Because if you don't, and you articulate it 17 different ways, Mike Birch Bay sometimes, and Mike Lake Sandwich, there's no way to hear what the right solution is. So I think we have a 4 o'clock meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's 4:05. So I'm not sure if this is the meet and greet, or if the meet and greet is over there, but.
I think, I don't know if there isn't organized meeting.
Well, you might have a meeting.
I don't know if it's a chamber. Oh, a chamber, okay, very good, we'll leave that. Yeah, well, I would thank you.
And I, we are here again at 6 o'clock for the local community, and we'll talk and chat about it. And this gives you a lot of room for thought, so get ready for 6 o'clock. Thank you. Make my life harder.